10th, 2021, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone, not speaking by default, to maintain good audio quality for the council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so is also listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you'll be called on during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name and your address, and then you would like to speak for or against an agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I would like to share the statement, disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in individual, without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, our invocation will be given by Councilman Kenneth Lee, First District Representative.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask today, God, that you would be with us, that you would help us as we begin to govern this great city. We ask that you would look on all of the officials, all of the community members that will take part of this. Lord, and we pray that you will continue to bind us together as a community with cords that cannot be broken. We pray, God, that we were respectful and hear everyone's different opinion, but most importantly, God, we pray that your hand would be on every issue that we vote on today, and that things will improve, and that quality of life for those in our city will be upgraded by the decisions that we make. Help this council, Lord, because we need your guidance. We need your strength, and we just need you to allow unity to flow throughout this council. All of these things we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, in the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which contains my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Henry's here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Nine present.
We'll now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, would you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Yes. Report of Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April 12, 2021 meeting. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I now like to entertain a motion to accept the Subcommittee on Minutes. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. All council members who are in favor of accepting the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes might hear your vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We'll now move to Special Business. We have Bill 05-2021, a special proclamation. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 05-2021?
Yes. 05-21, A Special Proclamation commemorating National Police Week and the National Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you. I do believe that Councilman Troy Warner, Fourth District Representative, is the presenter. Councilman Warner, are there other individuals who will be part of your presentation?
I didn't plan on this, and I don't have any other presenters, and we'll just go through and read the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Put this together for... Police Week is this week, and the Officers Memorial Service is May 15. South Bend Police Department is holding theirs Friday, the 14th, I believe at 7:30 at the police station, to remember those fallen officers in our community. The proclamation is a special proclamation commemorating National Police Week and the National Peace Officers Memorial Day, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and additionally, the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the women and men of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodges 36 and 155 will conduct their annual tribute and memorial service to honor all police officers who have given their lives in the line of duty on May 14, 2021. And whereas, among these 15 officers, these fallen officers are 15 South Bend officers: Oscar Christensen, Samuel Cooper, Louis Keller, Hans Brunt, Fred E. Bouland, Neil McIntyre, Lloyd Thompson, Delbert Thompson, Charles E. Farkas, Sr., Howard Wagner, Ronald St. Germain, Thomas D. Rue, Paul DeGooch, Scott Severance, and Nick Palazzato, and one St. Joseph County Officer, James W. Mumford. And whereas, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Common Council was unable to properly honor the officers who lost their lives in 2019. And whereas, although South Bend was fortunate in not suffering any such deaths in 2019 or 2020, we should all remember and honor the 135 officers killed in the line of duty in 2019, and the 267 officers killed in the line of duty of 2020, most from COVID-19, and whose names will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas, although we implore whatever powers exist to keep all law enforcement officers safe, so no new names are added to the memorial in the future, we must never forget or fail to honor all law enforcement officers who make the ultimate sacrifice on our behalf. Now, therefore, be it gratefully proclaimed by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1, During this National Police Week, we gratefully honor all law enforcement officers who have given their lives in the line of duty. Section 2, May their numbers grow no more. Section 3, may we never forget. Section 4, may their families and loved ones find peace. Signed and approved this 10th day of May, 2021, in the City of South Bend, County of St. Joseph, and the State of Indiana.
Thank you, Councilman Warner. Prior to going to the public hearing portion, I would like to ask the council members if you would like to make your comments after the public hearing portion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm now going to go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 05-2021? I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak.
I know Chief Ruskowski was planning to speak. Okay.
Okay. Okay. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Is that me, President White?
Yes, it is.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Scott Ruskowski, South Bend Police Chief, 701 West Sample Street, South Bend. On behalf of the entire police department and all the families and survivors of fallen officers, thank you so much for the proclamation. I know 2019/2020 was a more than difficult year, and council was not able to attend, but I'm hopeful that council will be able to make it this year. We're going to do some type of a hybrid this year. I believe President White is, but I'm not positive on that, and do not want to commit her whatsoever, but is much appreciated, the steps you have taken to recognize our fallen, and continue to recognize our officers who are still here doing this job. It is, again, very much appreciated, and I will certainly pass the word on it and look forward to our ceremony on May 14. As well, I don't know, I missed the first part, and I apologize because I was having technical errors, but they are doing the National Law Enforcement Memorial is going to be moved to October now because of COVID concerns, so we're still going to go ahead and do it. The National did give us permission, and all other agencies to do it with the Recognized Police Week that was established by President Kennedy, and we're going to continue with that. However, we may do something nationally come October, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else waiting to speak in support of Resolution 05-2021?
I'll wait a few minutes, a couple of seconds. At this time, I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in support of this resolution.
Or is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
At this time, I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of this resolution.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. I will turn to council members to see if you would like to offer any comments in regards to Resolution 05-2021. I would start with the at-large council members, Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you, President White. I would just like to add that the families and the loved ones of the fallen officers remain in our hearts and in our prayers, and we hope to continue to move forward policy that will ensure the safety of our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Councilman Warner, for the reading of the proclamation. I too just want to pay my respects and gratitude to the fallen police in our community, those fallen in the line of duty, but also those fallen from the pandemic over the past year. We hold your families in our hearts.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Niskowski.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Councilman Warner, for bringing the special proclamation to commemorate our fallen heroes, our fallen officers, and their families, because that's... They're the ones left behind due to the service of their husband or wife or loved one. And so, I just want to say, my heart is with the families. I can't imagine how hard it could be to lose your loved one due to COVID, doing your job, and just going to work every day. So thank you for bringing this proclamation.
Councilwoman Sharon McBride, Third District Representative.
I would like to say thank you for the special resolution and echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and also, it's dear and near to my heart, I graduated with Scott Severance, and Nick Palazzato was a year ahead in my class, so two officers I knew personally that had fallen, so prayers are continued to be with their families and with our city.
Thank you. Councilman Kenneth Lee, First District Representative.
Thank you, Chair White. Thank you, Troy Warner, for this resolution. You know, death is a very hard thing to deal with. We see it in so many different aspects of our community, and so when someone is lost, you know, when they die, a part of you die, so we just want to keep our hearts and minds to those family members who have lost loved ones, who have been serving our community, and we just want to take this time just to remember those individuals, never let them be forgotten, and thank their families for their service.
Thank you. Councilman Henry David Jr., Second District Representative.
Right, thank you. And what is so difficult is that everybody else gets to speak before you do, and so everything you've jotted down, I wrote down untimely, death, I wrote down ultimate sacrifice, front lines, thankless job. There are a lot more officers that are good than are bad. I had all those things I wanted to say, and I think that the council has said that, but I wanted to say thank you for your service, and we look forward to continued growth, not only with our law enforcement here locally, but across the nation, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Councilman Eli Wax, Fifth District Representative.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Councilmember Warner, for bringing this important proclamation before the council. Like Councilmember Davis said, there's not much to add at this point, except that I just want to express my appreciation to law enforcement officers who put themselves at risk every day and expose themselves, and some of them ultimately pay the ultimate sacrifice, and they're in our prayers, their families, and we pray that there are never more added to this list.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, I'm the last one now.
Oh, man, so you should just say I echo everybody.
All the words that have been spoken, I do support those, and I echo those as well, and would like to thank Councilmember Troy Warner for bringing forth this proclamation, and we look forward to working with our law enforcement officers, not only within the city, but the county as well, and appreciate all the work that they do. And Councilman Troy Warner, I did not know if you would like to add any additional comments?
Not much to add, you know, I read my thoughts, and thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to entertain a motion regarding the Special Proclamation 05-2021.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those who are in favor of passage of the Special Proclamation might hear your vote. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We do not have any reports from city officers. I would like to now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. All council members who are in favor of the motion might hear your vote. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where the bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson and the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. I would also like to set the decorum for the meeting based on the Code Sections and Roberts Rules of Order. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in an individual, without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. And at this time, I would like to ask Attorney Palmer for further comment in reference to the public portion of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Council members are given the opportunity to ask preliminary questions to the presenters immediately following the close of the formal presentation on the bill. Members of the public supporting the bill shall have the opportunity to address the council. Each member of the public shall be required to state his or her name and residential address, or, in the case of a proposal made on behalf of an entity other than a natural person or on behalf of a group of individuals, that person and/or their agent shall state his or her name and business address for the record prior to making remarks in support of the bill. Each member of the public speaking in favor of a bill shall be limited to five minutes for his or her presentation. If there's a formal presentation against the bill under consideration, the person or agent speaking on behalf of such remonstrance group shall not be subject to time limitation. Thereafter, each member of the public speaking in opposition shall be limited to five minutes for his or her presentation. Each member of the public shall be required to state his or her name and residential address, or, in the case of proposal made on behalf of an entity other than a natural person or on behalf of a group of individuals, that person and/or their agent shall state his or her name and business address for the record. The remonstrance period following the formal presentation against the bill, under consideration, shall not exceed the time used by the members of the public who spoke in favor of the bill, or shall be limited to 30 minutes, whichever is greater. There will then be an automatic five-minute rebuttal for the presenter.
Thank you, Attorney Palmer. At this time, we're going to proceed with the bills. I do need a motion to accept the Second Substitute Bill 8221.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, and it has been seconded. Do we have to do a roll call, or can we do consensus? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Does Adeline DeRose wanted to make a comment, as well as she on, Don?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Chairman. My name is Aladeen DeRose. I am the City Attorney with offices on the 12th floor of the County City Building. Welcome all of you to the presentation. I am not the presenter, however. I'm here only to provide some background and information about the new... About Substitute Bill 8221. Those who've worked more carefully, more closely with this ordinance and with the plan and with all of the details that have gone into it will be making the presentation, and those are Michael Patton, the Director of Diversity and Inclusion, and Assistant City Attorney Jenna Thro. In terms of the history and the law, you may know that this ordinance, with its purpose of equality of opportunity, goes back to the South Bend Common Council of 1987, and the work of Eugenia Brayboy, a courageous and determined council member at that time. The council then passed an ordinance with its aspiration for equal equity inclusion, fairness, and maximum participation of minority businesses and city contracts. Two years later, a major decision was made by the U.S. Supreme Court that then required statistical and very strong evidence of past discrimination in order to create any... To create goal-type remedies for past discrimination. So in 2011, this council initiated and invigorated the 1987 Equity and Inclusion Ordinance through then-council President Reverend Tim Rouse, and along with Councilmember, currently Council President Karen White. It provided concrete steps to more use of minority businesses and city contracts and aboard with oversight tasks. But that was not enough to provide real change. To really nudge minority inclusion, the law since Crowson versus City of Richmond requires a disparity study to prove the actual evidence of government discrimination contracting toward minority businesses. Thus, another step was needed to get to where we're today. That happened in 2017, when the city contracted with a national expert disparity studies, attorney Colette Holt and her firm, Colette Holt and Associates. Ms. Holt had been responsible for protecting and preserving the U.S. Department of Transportation's Highway Minority Inclusion Program in the Seventh Circuit, and she argued for its protection. It was a model, that program was a model, for several programs within the state of Illinois. Her disparity study for South Bend was presented to the public in 2019, and an ordinance and plan based on that study was passed by the council that November. As the county... As the city itself administration worked with the plan based on the disparity study, it became apparent internally that the data did not align with the actual numbers of available minority contractors in this geographic marketplace. At the city's insistence, Ms. Holt took another look at the data, determined that there was error, took responsibility for that error, and provided a new study with figures that correspond to what our city contracting agencies actually knew and understood about the minority business community. From all that experience, and after several months of observation, we can now embark on a stronger, clearer, robust ordinance and minority inclusion plan, fully supportable by a disparity study that meets legal standards. We now have software that will be implemented to assure we meet the constitutional standard of narrowly focused race and gender goals to facilitate participation of minority and women-owned firms in city contracting, goals that are narrowly tailored to the specifics of a project. In addition to software, we have oversight by the Inclusive Procurement Board itself, by the Diversity and Inclusion Office, the Legal Department, and the Public Board of Works. We are all committed to getting this right as required by law, and we urge you to pass Substitute Bill 8221 this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn it over to the actual presenter, our first presenter, who is Michael Patton, Director of Diversity and Inclusion.
Point of order, we need to read the bill first. Clerk Jones, could you please read Bill 8221 for a second reading?
8221, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, repealing and replacing current Chapter 14.5 of the South Bend Municipal Code to address inclusive minority and women business enterprise development programs.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
That's me, I'm sorry. Yes, Madam Chair, this bill comes to you out of the Personnel and Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan to introduce the presenter this evening.
Thank you, Chair Niskowski. As the council co-sponsor on Bill 8221, I just want to share a couple introductory comments and share that since Attorney Holt's presentation to the council of the revised disparity study, which was in November of 2020, the Inclusive Procurement Board meeting... Inclusive Procurement Board has been meeting since November of 2020 with a more thorough review of the ordinance, monthly meetings, special meetings, meetings lasting two, three hours at a time. Additionally, we've had two Personnel and Finance Committee meetings to discuss and to hear the bill. Additionally, we solicited feedback, questions, and concerns from council members, and received feedback, constructive feedback, from a majority, seven council members. What is before the council is second... Is a second substitute version that, as Chair Warner... As Councilman Warner had said, Personnel and Finance had moved and recommended to go to the council with a favorable recommendation. This substitute version reflects the hours of work of the 11 members of the IPC Board, plus the feedback from council members, the work of city departments, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. In addition to the work, however, we understand that there are still outstanding questions that need to be answered, and as well, much misinformation that is circling. We hope to address these questions through the presentation and question period tonight. And with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Reverend Michael Patton, who will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rachel Tomas. Certainly appreciate the introduction, and I want to... Certainly appreciate the introduction, and I want to say greetings to President Karen White, South Bend council members, and as well, the public that have joined us on this evening. I am Michael Patton, Diversity Compliance Inclusion Officer for the City of South Bend. I'm located on the fourteenth floor of the City-County Building. Joining me in this presentation will be Aladeen DeRose and Jenna Thro from our Legal Department, as well as Dr. Kara Boiles from Public Works. I'm here today to present to the, to the South Bend Common Council a proposal to update Chapter fourteen-point-five of the South Bend Municipal Code. This proposal was voted on by the Personnel and Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation at their May third committee meeting. The draft of this ordinance began in nineteen-eighty-seven with the push of Second District Councilwoman Eugenia Brayboy, the South Bend Common Council. They recognized that there are city, that our city needed to address the challenge of equal opportunity for minorities and women with regard to employment and bidding for As I present this updated bill, I would like for you to be aware that this bill helps our most vulnerable population of small businesses called MWBEs. As well, it's important to know that MWBEs have faced years of discrimination, systemic racism, and lack of resources which have put them at a disadvantage to be successful. Along with those challenges, our community came to a screeching halt March the sixteenth, twenty-twenty due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Our local women business enterprises and minority business enterprises were deeply impacted due to the pandemic. Some businesses could not recover from the lack of resources and social distancing restrictions and stay-home executive order by our Governor Eric Hoco. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion was created to give minority and women business enterprises hope and opportunity. The purpose of this updated ordinance is to reduce barriers to full and fair opportunities on city contracts for minority and women-owned firms, including adopting mechanisms to capture and quantify minority and women business enterprise utilization in city contracting and procurement, developing opportunities for small local minority and women-owned firms to participate in competing and competing for city business, and creating a thriving and inclusive economic ecosystem. The bill that our office has presented is essentially the same as the bill and program plan that was approved in November twenty-nineteen, but has been enhanced to make it more robust. All of the main pillars of the ordinance are still intact with revisions and language changes that legal will clarify for us. The updated ordinance, as it stands, is stronger, more robust, and is defensible. The implementation of the ordinance and program plan will be transformational and create incremental change that our city desires. The goal of the disparity study is the primary, the primary goal is to assess, quantify, and elevate, evaluate rather than prevalence, significance, and scope of discrimination in the marketplace, and as well, if any, against minority and women business enterprises. The City of South Bend's disparity study, Colette Holt and Associates was retained by the City of South Bend to perform a study in, conformant with strict constitutional scrutiny to determine its utilization of minority and women-owned business enterprises, collectively MWBEs, determine the availability of MWBEs in its marketplace or market area, determine any disparities between its utilization and MWBE availability, and to evaluate whether the use of race-conscious measures is supported by the results of the analysis. The firm was also tasked with making recommendations for increasing the inclusion of MWBEs in small businesses. Data was analyzed for calendar years twenty-fifteen through twenty-seventeen, and then as well, the City of South Bend twenty-twenty disparity study. Here's a timeline of the ordinance one-oh-six-nine-three-dash-one-nine. As I made mention, Second District Councilwoman Eugenia Brayboy and the council presented at that time in nineteen-eighty-seven the first MWB ordinance that was drafted. In two thousand and eleven, an amendment was proposed to the nineteen-eighty-seven regulations to improve participation and overall opportunities. In two thousand and eighteen, Colette Holt and Associates was retained by the City of South Bend to perform the first disparity study. In two thousand and nineteen, the disparity study results were released, supporting the City of South Bend's interest in implementing a new race and gender-conscious MWBE program. In two thousand and nineteen, also, the MWB ordinance and the MWBE program plan was approved. In two thousand and twenty, Colette Holt and Associates submitted a revised version of the study to correct errors committed by the firm. In two thousand and twenty-one, the amended MWB ordinance and program was submitted to inclusive procurement and contracting, which is the IPC Board, and unanimously approved it to move forward. In two thousand and twenty-one, Office of Disparity and Inclusion is seeking South Bend Common Council approval to repeal and replace Chapter fourteen-point-five of the Municipal While the need for an amendment, we were unable to implement, implement a goal-setting program in two thousand and twenty. The statistical data was wrong, therefore, moving forward with goal-setting based upon that data would be problematic. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion had to adjust to good-faith efforts around contracting and implemented race and gender-neutral measures. We contacted Colette Holt and Associates. They found their data was in error. A revised report was provided in two thousand and twenty. Attorney Holt met with the IPC Board and Common Council in November of two thousand and twenty to discuss the errors. She presented a revised disparity, disparity report with the new statistical data. Jenna Thro will share at this point.
Good evening, Councilwoman. A pleasure to be here. My name is Jenna Thro, Assistant City Attorney, and my offices are on the twelfth floor of the County City Building. I want to share some information with the council this evening regarding some specific revisions that have strengthened the ordinance that is, that is before you this evening. So some of the key provisions that have made the ordinance stronger as it sits before you this evening are that the revisions include substantial additional explanation regarding the goal-setting process, as well as the process for obtaining a goal waiver and for appealing the denial of a goal waiver. Those provisions not only provide helpful transparency to the public in understanding how the city moves from its data regarding the availability of minority and women-owned firms in the marketplace to the goals that are actually set on a contract, but it also clearly sets out how contractors are able to fulfill good-faith efforts and to appeal any adverse determinations. Within, in the, even in the prior ordinance and plan, there were references to having an appeal process that satisfies due process, and that's what these provisions do, is clearly set out the, the requirements for appeals and for the process as a whole. Next, the language regarding the sunset provision was modified in both the ordinance and the plan to more specifically address the purpose of that provision. The sunset provision is something that's required in any race-conscious program, and that requires there to be a continued cycle of evidentiary review after a certain period of time to ensure that we're continuing to make sure that race and gender-conscious measures are necessary. And so the revisions to the ordinance and the program more clearly set this out and explain that the requirements of the, of the plan and the program include the requirement to reevaluate the need for the program every, within every seven years. Next, with respect to the, the city's geographic marketplace, one of the key revisions that occurred in the revised disparity study was the revision of the city's geographic marketplace. When the revisions to the disparity study and to the data were conducted, it was noted that our geographic marketplace actually only includes the state of Indiana plus Marion County, Michigan, and one of the requirements for a program is that it be limited to your geographic marketplace. And so the revisions that have been done to the ordinance and the plan specifically address this requirement and make sure, make very clear that it is only applicable to the state of Indiana and Marion County, Michigan, as far as contractors that are eligible for the program and things like that. Along the same lines, we've also increased the clarity regarding certified businesses being eligible for the program. In any race or gender-conscious program, the firms that count towards goals have to be certified as MWBEs, and so the revisions to the program plan have made this distinction a lot more clear, and between kind of general discussions of inclusivity efforts that are applicable to all minority and women-owned businesses, as opposed to the specific goal-setting measures that are, only pertain to certified firms. Next, another area of appeals that is more clearly described in the revisions to the program plan is the appeal, an appeal for a finding of noncompliance. Again, as I noted with the goal waivers, that also increases the transparency to the public and lets contractors know exactly what's expected of them and exactly what their options are if there is a finding of noncompliance. And so next, next thing I'd like to share with the council this evening is how the language from the original two thousand and nineteen ordinance and program plan are incorporated into the ordinance and program plan that's before you this evening. All seventeen sections of the two thousand and nineteen ordinance are incorporated within either the ordinance or the program plan in the current documents. Ten of the sections from the two thousand and nineteen ordinance, including the legislative intent, the definitions, the nondiscrimination provisions, the emergency contract provision, the section on the inclusive procurement board, the section on program administration, on registration, contract goals, maintenance of records and reporting, as well as the annual participation report. That, all of that language from the original ordinance remains in the, the ordinance before you this evening. And with respect to the race and gender-conscious and race and gender-neutral sections, the current ordinance contains the, the key pillars of those, those provisions. So the ordinance clearly just sets out from, especially the race-conscious section, exactly what types of, what the, the program will be, that there's contract-specific goals, and we have the appeal process, and the sunset provision, and those key pillars of the race-conscious program. And then, the program plan includes all of the language that describes how those measures are accomplished, and that's where you find the detail and the explanation and those types of things. And, but the actual language itself, that was in the two thousand and nineteen ordinance, that language is still what is included in the plan on those topics. The most substantive changes were with respect to the inclusive procurement board, and those sections were modified so that the duties of the inclusive procurement board would clearly spell out exactly what duties were performed by the board, where previously some of those duties were woven in with duties of the program administrator or other city departments, and now those are separated out into their respective sections of the program plan. Finally, with respect to, with, with respect to items that have been added that, even that increase the strength of the current ordinance and plan, one of those are that the new program plan contemplates the setting of separate minority and women-owned business goals, and that helps ensure that for each contract that goals are set for, that there are both minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses getting chances to participate, counter participation towards those goals. Additionally, with respect to legislative intent, there have been several additional provisions added on to the legislative intent section to further clarify and establish the purpose and intent behind the, the ordinance. Within the definitions section also, there have been additional definitions added to support some of the additional explanation that's included in the program plan now, and also to address the changes in the geographic marketplace, and to support the, the increased clarity regarding the use of certified firms. With respect to the race and gender-conscious and race and gender-neutral sections, there has been language added there to further clarify and explain the purpose of some of those provisions and how those provisions would be enacted, and how certain race-neutral measures would actually come to fruition with, within the department. Additionally, the, throughout the ordinance, there have been, there's several references that specifically incorporate the program plan. So it's very clear throughout the ordinance where there's additional detail regarding how a particular step of the provision set out in the ordinance, how that is actually accomplished, that it's clear that the relationship between the ordinance and the program plan. I also want to highlight that the ordinance also contemplates the, an annual review of the program plan and provides for the program administrator to share that document on an annual basis to have a dialogue regarding the, any changes in metrics or reporting and anything like that. And so, Michael, if you want to continue from there, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenna, for that clarification and update around the ordinance and as well the program plan. The revised two thousand and twenty disparity report requires the City of South Bend the ability to amend the ordinance and MWBE program plan. Here are the two thousand and twenty-one action items as we talk about develop, which represents implement race and gender-neutral measures. Jenna has made mention of those changes and action items. Adopt a small business enterprise target market, create a City of South Bend certification program, set aside some small, smaller contracts for bidding only by small local firms as prime contractors. As we look at the implement side of this slide, implement race and gender-conscious measures, set contract-specific codes for certified minority and women business enterprise, and then lastly, adjust, address the four hundred percent gap between WBE and MBE spending, and set separate goals for minority and women businesses. Jenna has made mention of our dual-goal setting initiative versus the aggregate goal-setting initiative that we have utilized in the past, and doing this will certainly increase utilization for WBEs as well as MBEs. Certainly, this would not be possible without the collaborators who have joined me in addressing the ordinance and program plan. Certainly, the Office of our Mayor, Mayor James Mueller, has had input, my office as well. well, the IPC board certainly has had input in the ordinance and, as well, the program plan. I see IPC as our community. They are community members that are part of the board, and I'm appreciative for the work that they've committed to as well. Also, our legal department, administration and finance, public works, information technology, procurement department, and then last but not least, certainly, the South Bend Common Council has had an opportunity to give input around the ordinance and program plan. A more equitable South Bend. Inclusive infrastructure. Office of Diversity and Inclusion has begun investing in minority and women business support by contracting with 87% minority-owned networks of business coaches, financial experts, bookkeeping, or bookkeepers, and lawyers to increase formal economic participation. ODI has budgeted dollars for capacity and growth tools like business cluster assistance and insurance and equipment, financial support. ODI plans to host two business expos to highlight minority and women-owned businesses in the public and commercial sectors. And then, public works, legal, procurement, and innovation and technology departments are working together to integrate the City of South Bend contract compliance system, tracking system, to monitor and protect MWBEs participating in projects with MWBE goals. And I want to applaud certainly my compliance administrator Larry King, who has led a team of people around our new compliance software, which we have elected to purchase from B2G Now. And we are at the latter end of training and as well going live. May the 24th, we go live, and I'm looking forward to utilizing the compliance software to help us to track, along with our new system, DFO. Those two coupled together will help us to be able to create better reports and as well to track the MWBEs and those opportunities. Inclusive policymaking, reducing and eliminating barriers. City engineers will be evaluating project scope and size to better align with goods and services on scale of local enterprises. Legal, diversity, inclusion, and public works exploring solutions, high-cost bonding, and insurance requirements. And inclusive procurement, the City of South Bend with assistance from Bloomberg philanthropies is working with local universities, manufacturers, and others to increase equitable minority and women participation throughout the city, which I look forward to due to the fact that there may not be contracting here at the city. But as I term others in our community as anchor organizations, we may be able to scale up businesses and connect them to other opportunities, which gives them work immediately. And so I look forward to working even with our anchor organizations. And lastly, the Department of Diversity and Inclusion requests your approval to repeal and replace chapter 14.5 of the municipal code. As you can see, my staff is pictured here, Larry King, who is my compliance administrator, and certainly Antonius Northern, who is my project manager, and as well, I'm grateful for our attorney, Jenna Thro. Any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
I do. Good.
President White.
I have two questions, and the first question I would like to address to Attorney Aladeen DeRose. I want to make sure that, and I really appreciate your overview that led up to the presentation. So the need to, the need for the second substitute bill to repeal and replace the current chapter 14.5 is in response to the disparity study.
I'm sorry, that is correct, Councilmember White. Councilmember White.
And if the disparity study did not have, if the disparity study did not have any issues, then we would not be at this place.
That's probably true, although we may have, as we look at the ordinance in practice, we may have made some of the changes in terms of good faith efforts and the clarification of some of those things. But yes, generally, the reason for the change was because of the disparity study and its error.
Then my second part to my first question, because I have two, is that as I look at the concerns of past issues of discrimination in regards to ensuring that the playing field is level for minority women businesses, some of the strategies or proposals that I heard could and are in place to begin to have affirmative steps to address past discrimination.
That's correct, Councilmember White. And that's been a process that started in 1987. But with the development of our, of the department under Michael Patton's leadership, that those, those race-neutral and gender-neutral measures have become very much more intensive and more, I think, productive than they have been in the past. And we hope that those will grow the minority base of our business community, and that they will, in themselves, those measures will assist and provide a burgeoning economy and a burgeoning minority participation.
And so what happened in 1987, you know, is kind of, you know, a sad situation that we're at this point, but I think that we're moving in the right direction to have those measurable steps in place. But also, if I'm not mistaken, that we had to have had a disparity study in order, based on what of the different rulings at the federal level, in order to get to this point.
That's absolutely correct, Council President White. Without a disparity study, we cannot set goals. We have to have a disparity study to do that.
I'll come back to my second question. Okay, council members, anybody else have a question?
I have a statement I'd like to read.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
I, I just would like to get the clarification, because there's been a lot of misinformation in our community that this ordinance guts the previous one. I just want us to, to reiterate how this ordinance strengthens. And, and I know with the, with the program plan and, and ordinance, that's been a big, big controversial issue. Again, just for the state of clarity, how this new ordinance does not gut what has previously been done, but makes it legal and binding.
Yes, council member, you are correct, that without, with the previous disparity study, we had incorrect figures and incorrect statistics about the availability of minorities. Had we used those figures, which are actually higher than what the reality is, we would have been subject to, I think, challenge by those who would say that we set goals too high, because the goals must be set based on the actual availability of minority businesses working on a specific task in city contracts.
And, and this, this ordinance, it helps to, does it help to push the agenda in order for more minority and women businesses to get the opportunity to participate in city contracts?
Yes, as I said previously, the fact that we have racially neutral measures, that we are growing the minority business base, as we grow that minority business base, the number of minorities increases, and therefore, their inclusion and the percentages that we can utilize them in our contracts increases as well. So the two work hand in hand. The, the goals allow minorities who exist to be used, the race-neutral and gender-neutral measures grow the base so that we have more contractors to select from who are minorities.
Any other council members have a question? Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair Nitskotsky. I can understand where going from a 14-page ordinance to what is now a revised amended ordinance that is four pages in length would draw concern from many. And I can understand where some may think just that move in and of itself has weakened the ordinance. However, I, we have sought counsel from our own counsel attorney, and so in addressing the question that has been posed to us about the, the, I guess, the, the relationship between the program plan and the ordinance, the question that has been raised is that, that it's not, that it's not binding. And so I'd, I'd like to turn to our counsel attorney to clarify that for us in the way you've, you have advised us.
Yes, council member. My review of the ordinance indicates that it incorporates by reference, in places the plan, which it has the effect of including the plan within the ordinance itself, so that as it's written, the plan becomes part of the ordinance and is binding, just as the terms of the ordinance is.
Thank you, Attorney Palmer. I may reserve my second question for a little later.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Attorney Palmer and I also had a conversation, and he also suggested that we add additional incorporation language to legally attach the plan to the ordinance. I propose that that be added in section 14.5-3, second paragraph, following the words "program plan," and I will defer to our attorney for the legalese necessary for that.
And my suggestion on that would be to simply put in parentheses, "as incorporated by reference in this plan, in this ordinance."
Could you repeat that?
Yes, my, my recommendation to make it absolutely crystal clear is to add a parenthetical after the word "plan" as specifically incorporated in this ordinance by reference.
I'm sorry, Chair, where, where is that?
Which section is that?
Which section is that?
It is 14.5-3, second paragraph, following the words "the program plan." Dash three, yes.
Dash three.
It says establishing the program plan is the heading.
And if I might, although I believe that the ordinance itself is more than sufficient to do this legally, as, as Councilmember Hammond pointed out to me, the sunset law and sunset provision is seven years, and there is a very good possibility that not all of us will be here in seven years, and this makes it absolutely crystal clear, in my opinion.
President White? Yes, I would also like to add, offer an amendment to the program plan. I've shared that with our attorney in regards to the role of this council in working with the administration and the board in terms of making any proposals or changes. And I don't have it in front of me. Attorney Palmer, could you read that for me, or ask Councilwomen Rachel Tomas Morgan to read that in the section?
Sure.
That it should appear in?
Yes, the amendment, the additional amendment we discussed is in the program plan, page eight of 28. It's in section four, point C, changes to this program plan. So in this, in the second section, there are two places where the common council will be added. In the second sentence in that paragraph, it will read, "Before making any proposed changes effective, the program administrator must solicit feedback on the proposed changes from the legal department, the director of public works, the city engineer, the city controller, the director of purchasing, and the chief innovation officer." We will add there the common council and finish that sentence as it reads, "and the inclusive procurement and contracting board." The final sentence in that section will read, "The program administrator must also present the changes to the inclusive procurement and contracting board." After that, we will add the common council and end the remainder of that sentence as is, as well as other impacted city boards and commissions. Is that correct, President White?
Thank you. Thank you. Does, is there any other council members that has a question? Okay. At this point, we are going to go then to the public hearing portion. Is there any fronting from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8221? This is Dawn from the clerk's office, and I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of this bill. Thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 8221? There are four, so far, four individuals that, wait a minute, I think, let me go back to the support. We have Larry King, who just raised his hand, that I believe is speaking in support of this bill. Mr. King, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and your address.
Yes, can you hear me? My name is Larry King. My address is 1624 Georgian Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I clearly support this bill, 8221, and repeal and replacing the current ordinance 14.5. I'm in favor, I've supported this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We have another, Mr. David Moss, I believe is speaking in favor, I'm not sure, I'm not seeing, if he could, Mr. Moss, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and your address, please. You have five minutes. Mr. Moss? Is it Moss or Ross?
Yes, I'm here. Hello?
Yes, if you could state your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name is Dr. G. David Moss. My address is 22057 Sandy Brook Drive, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, you have five minutes.
Yes. One of the things that we have to be aware of is that now is a time for us to take swift action to move our minority and women businesses forward. This has been a sore spot for our city for such a long time, and now is the moment, now is the time to really move things forward. And, and recognizing that nothing's going to be perfect right away, but one step at a time, we have the opportunity now to really support black businesses and minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses. I've had the opportunity to speak with at least 50 business owners over the past three or four months, talking about their disappointments, talking about their successes, and talking about the ways in which they want to improve the way they do business in the city. The one thing that is common across all business owners that I've talked to is that they have a zeal and a desire to be fully engaged in economic progress of the city. But so often, obstacles stand in the way. And so through this ordinance, through the opportunity that's been provided by the Diversity and Inclusion Office, these business owners are now learning the language of business, understanding what it means to be fully engaged, and also gaining confidence in their ability to navigate the system. So this is the perfect time, this is the, the moment that we have to really bring South Bend into the 21st century, to really say, we put- Bend into the 21st century, to really say, we put our money where our mouth is. We support those businesses, and we're going to make sure they're going to be successful to bring everyone into the picture. The reality is that when everyone is involved, it gets better for everyone. That when we raise one individual, one business, we raise all businesses, because now we have this engagement that happens across the board. I stand fully in favor of this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Next, we have Mr. Isaac Hunt. Mr. Hunt, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Isaac Hunt, I.S.A.A.C.H.U.N.T., and I stay at 138 East Broadway, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I'm in support of this plan. And just what Dr. Moss just said, that we have, this is a prime opportunity for us to be able to support more minority-owned businesses, women minority-owned businesses, to be able to galvanize and get our community back up from the COVID-19. And I appreciate all the work that Michael Patton has been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for support.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. Well, we'll now move to the portion to those wishing to speak in opposition.
The first person we have to speak in opposition is Mr. Joseph Shabazz. Mr. Shabazz, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Shabazz. I'm here, 08, Lambo.
It's, it's, Mr. Shabazz, it's very difficult to hear you. I don't know if you can adjust your mic.
Okay, wait a minute. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, it's just muffled.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm trying to speak louder.
That's bad.
Madam White, fellow council people, thank you for this opportunity to share my views. Some of the council people really don't know me. So for the record, I'd like to state that I've been involved in this process for the past 20 years. And as a result of those efforts, I received a Eugenia Brave Award Lifetime Achievement Award, and the city is out there. I just want to try out my credentials, so you won't think I'm some kind of troublemaker trying to make noise. Everybody keeps talking about this new ordinance is higher strength, but everything that I've seen, that they want to incorporate into this new ordinance already exists. You talk about a target, a target market program, there was a provision in the current ordinance to call for small local business enterprises with an ear toward reserved setting aside some work strictly for this gender and race neutral program, so that we could get them the capacity to apply for the MBE where they could compete on a larger level. It's really already there. We, I don't get how appointed officials can change the legislative intent of a legislative body. That doesn't make sense to me. I, I, I'm at a loss as to why the Section 3 program. For those of you who don't know, the Section 3 program can be found at 24 CFR 135. It's called Economic Opportunities for Low and Very Low Income People. For years, the city has ignored this provision and not done anything. The reason why it's there is because people felt like it was time for us to incorporate some training initiatives for low, very low-income people in this community, so they could take part in the process. I noticed that the tax abatement piece wasn't in there. That piece was put in because we met with the head of the Tax Abatement Department and showed him seven, eight, nine different CFR, I think it's CFR four, no, it's CFR one. This is the form that's supposed to be submitted back to the city and the state to verify that they were doing what they were supposed to do in terms of recording. Most of them were incomplete, as it relates to the employment piece. That's why it was in the ordinance. So if you take it out, you're basically saying that that's business as usual. Do we care if minorities work on some of those tax abatement projects that run into the millions of dollars now? Do we care that some of the programs that Mr. Patton is proposing are basically already in the ordinance? It seems like we keep trying to fix stuff when it ain't broke. Now, we told Mr. Patton early on, I'm talking about earlier this year, about some of the other provisions that could be enacted and enforced without the set aside piece. We understood that there was an issue with that. That part could have got done at a later time, but there was some stuff that he could have done that he didn't. You have to wonder why he had a steadfast refusal to en, to enforce the current ordinance. We have went nearly 18 months with no action in that regard, and I gotta wonder, why is that? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ava Thomas Sula Garcia.
Hi, good evening, my name's Ava Thomas Sula. My address is 326 West LaBarre Street, South Bend, 46616. So I want to first just thank the Department of Diversity and Inclusion for all your work. And, and, you know, as, as so many people have said, we absolutely need more and better legislation for the city to contract with women and minority-owned businesses. That's without question. However, and I also appreciate the proposed amendments tonight that make the, the relationship between this bill and the program plan more clear. However, I'd like to echo what, what, what you've just said, the previous speaker, Mr. Shabazz. As far as I understand it, I think there are actually some parts of the, of the current standing legislation that were removed, which I think are, are important to, to the whole bill. I, I think I better understand now the relationship to the program plan. However, as, as Mr. Shabazz said, I don't think the, the current legislation is actually being well enforced. For example, I, I understand that there, there's not been a report yet for the quarter submitted to, by the Diversity and Inclusion Office showing measurable results from the standing law. And so my, my concern is that, as Mr. Shabazz has, has outlined, some of the kind of integral parts to this bill have been removed, even if there is like, you know, an effort to, to strengthen the bill. And there's not much data available to the public to, to see actually how the bill is, is functioning. And so I, I do have some reservations about the, the substitute ordinance, even though, of course, I think everyone wants to work towards making this better legislation, and we absolutely need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Hari Ra Murthy.
Hello, my name is Hari Ra Murthy, and I live in 18065 Buller Road. And I'm, I'm doing my doctorate in mathematics right now at Notre Dame. And I want to speak in opposition to the second substitute bill, 8221. I read through the changes in the bill on, on the council website. I read through the whole thing, and I think that mired in all the legalese is, we can't see past, I, I don't think this, this bill is a good idea, because I don't think that the current Diversity and Inclusion Office has been entirely competent in doing what it's been supposed to be doing over the past year. And I think the current plan leaves more up to the, leaves more up to them, and I'm, I'm thinking in particular about page eight of the second substitute bill. Rachel Tomas Morgan mentioned this about 10 minutes back, but it says, "This program plan may be amended only by the program administrator with their view and approval of the mayor." And Rachel Tomas Morgan mentioned that we should add in the council members, but I don't think that it's appropriate that the program plan should only be able to be amended only by the program administrator. I think that makes oversight weak, and in order to make this plan better, there needs to be more oversight by the common council. So I appreciate what the Diversity and Inclusion Office has been doing, and I appreciate that we're all on the same side of this, and I appreciate the good intentions. I just don't think that this bill is a good idea. It fixes something that isn't broken, and, and it makes oversight weaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kat Reddy. Ms. Reddy, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Catherine Reddy, 418 Lamont Terrace, South Bend, Indiana. So I think it's important to play a close attention to language, and I'm hearing a lot in Michael's proposal, minority neutral. It's very prevalent that we have, we had the disparity study because we were missing the, the minority business owners here in South Bend. So that, to me, is opening up the gates for the focal point to be missed. Also, I, I heard a conversation about anchoring, anchoring in. So I, I really would like to hear more about that, but it sounds like me, that sounds like we'll be outsourcing a lot of work. Also, too, I think it's important to pay attention to a year's time that has gone by. And we've, he's, Michael Patton has cited that there's been data flaws, but the biggest data flaw that's prevalent here is there's no data to present here today. And I think that's very concerning, because I think a lot of time has went into undermining the council and revising a bill that wasn't even sought out. It hasn't had, he hasn't done the work with the ordinance to see if that we could even, you know, be productive with the ordinance. And I think that, to me, shows that Michael Patton thinks that he's smarter than the council, and he's avoiding his due diligence to do the work and produce the data that we've missed countless years, citing that there has been data errors all the way up into the disparity study, that I think that, that, that study itself probably rans like $250,000 to the city. So I think there's a lot of issues that we could point out that's very, you know, transparent here. But I think the biggest issue is that the job was not done, and Michael Patton thought to do the council's job for them instead of seeing out.
Point of order.
Seeing out.
Yes, if you could please refrain from any personal attacks and stick to the ordinance itself and what the issues.
This is not a personal attack. This is not a personal attack. I have no personal issues with Michael Patton. I don't even know him. But I'm just telling you that it's transparent, that the job was not done. I'm telling the council and the people that are on this job, on this call today, the job was not done for a year. There was no outreach, and there still isn't outreach component within this new revised 14.5. I guess adding legal and, and having the council to meet and with the administrator, I think it's fine, but I just think that this, this whole order revise is unnecessary at this point. I think that the job needs to be done the right way, the first.
You have, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jordan Geiger. Mr. Geiger, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, thank you, 302, or Jordan Geiger, 302 South Falcon Street, South Bend, Indiana. I'm not, I'm not sure, sorry, I joined kind of late, my allergies got the best of me today, but I, I guess from what I'm hearing, there might be like an amendment or two or something on the floor. But I am here to speak in opposition to second substitute bill, 8221. I think like has already been said by a number of other speakers before me, there's just no like concrete data really for us to know, you know, what the outcomes have been. In reading the current standing ordinance, there are supposed to be public benefit points referenced or mentioned in the procurement report. I haven't seen that personally. Also, with the quarterly report that's required, I don't know if that's been addressed, but that has not been submitted. So it, it's sort of like, what do we have that would indicate to us that we need to make changes to an ordinance that was just strengthened in 2019? I think there was another point that I wanted to bring up. I've been attending, you know, the last few inclusive procurement and contracting board meetings, and there's no data, as far as I'm aware, on what business the city has done with black-owned firms. And if you look at the 2020 report, there were only 24, as I understand, registered MBE find, I guess, contractors who've been, who've received contracts from the, from the city for work. And so it's like, if there's only 24, how do we not know? 24 that we know of that have been counted for, how do we not know how many of those 24 are, are black? And so, you know, really before we pass or change, and then this, this repeal and replace the current ordinance, it would be great if the council could just do a policy evaluation to do its, do its due diligence in considering the work that has been done and what the outcomes are. But yeah, that's what I have to add to the conversation, but I agree with what folks have been saying prior to my meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else?
Yes, there is. Next, we have Mr. Jesse Davis. Mr. Davis, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Fortunately, we're all on the same page, and we want to make sure that we are including the minority and women-owned businesses in our work in South Bend. Unfortunately, we've spent over three decades trying to accomplish this, and we haven't accomplished much at all, from what I've seen and what I've heard through the meetings and so forth. I'm just a little bit off about the city certifying businesses to be on this program or to get contract work. It's been seen in the past that the city doesn't have a real strong track record as far as certifying businesses or including small businesses and all local businesses. So I find it hard to believe that they will do so with the minority of the women-owned businesses in the community. A lot of the same people who were involved in a RICO lawsuit that was basically not even publicized for five years, where we talked about pay-to-play and some corrupt issues going on within our own city departments, was never put out publicly. And during that time, the city was supposedly certifying businesses, but when the city was asked about those certified businesses or lists of contractors that they were supplying to homeowners and people that needed business taken care of, we were told that those lists didn't exist, when in fact they did. So I see a lot of the same players involved when they showed the slide about who was involved in all of this certification process. And I'm hoping that if we've got all these same players involved, that things have changed since 2010, and that these since 2010 and that these people are going to honestly include people and not still hide things and be untransparent and basically do the same pay to play programs that we've been doing for decades and decades.
Are you finished?
I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else?
Yes, we have Arakel Bloss. Ms. Bloss, if you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm A. Arakel Bloss, 2513 Erskine Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I'm basically, I came to speak on behalf of the Black Lives Matter Chapter, South Bend, and their demands for the second substitution bill of 8212. I've been, like them, very concerned over the years at the lack of progress in these areas. Also, the lack of oversight, basically, by the mayor and the common council to ensure that the WMEB board has even been meeting, as was intended under Mayor Lick. And the lack of progress processes have not been followed through on, monitored. And then necessary. As you know, in our city, we have over 40% of people of color. And every single one of those demographics has a higher than national average of poverty. And I think that's very embarrassing for us that, given those statistics and with a $380, $3 million budget, with $110 million budget for contracts, that we're only giving less than 3% to minority and women enterprises. That's embarrassing to me. I think that this, this new revision of this ordinance is short. And I don't trust that without the proper guidance and everything completely spelled out, that it will be a successful. I also believe that the reporting requirements are too minimal. And I also, it should be quarterly. We don't have a year to wait. We have many people that are, we need to lift up these communities. We can't wait a year. And I also wanted to say that some of the, the verbiage in there is, I don't believe is acceptable. Like the administrator of the program plan can just go ahead and change it laterally. And then.
We're losing you.
I don't think any person should have that kind of lateral. I don't think any one person should be able to change a program plan that has this much impact on our community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else?
Yes, next we have Mr. Drew Duncan. Mr. Duncan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, this is Drew Duncan, 2103 High Street, South Bend, Indiana. I think the critical portions to take away from the opposition and, and the people who have spoken in favor of the bill is it's not currently perfect. And even as we amend it, it won't be perfect. But what we're also understanding is that the office that will be tasked with overseeing the implementation of this ordinance over the past 12, 12 months or so has not been able to give us a level of production that the public trusts they'll be able to handle additional work such as this. Additionally, I, I think it's incredibly important that the oversight of this ordinance continues to sit and rest as the responsibility of the council. Today, as I sat as a committee, a citizen committee person in the committee hearings, I heard a lot, including the council president, speak about how it was important to defer back to council people in their districts in things concerning that. So I would assume that everybody sitting that represents a district in South Bend right now would want to make sure that there's oversight for the businesses that are minority owned in their district. To surrender that in a new ordinance that, that does not solve the problems, is not perfect, and from an office that has not produced the capability to even handle such a workload would be negligent and it shows a lack of critical thinking. So today, I, I'm hoping that, that we get something different.
Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else?
No, that exhausts our lists.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, the public hearing on bill 8221 is now closed. Is there any council members that can make, wish to? Oh, I'm sorry. Five minute rebuttal. Oh. Presenter, a sponsor. Mr. Patton, you have a five minute rebuttal. Thank you, President White.
Thank you, President White, for, and the council for this opportunity to share in regards to our ordinance and program plan. As myself, Aladeen DeRose, Jenna Throh have shared with you on this evening, we have a strengthened ordinance and program plan as well. We have, are looking forward to implementing the revised ordinance and program plan that we believe will bring transformational change to the residents of our community and provide opportunities to them as well. There are a number of things that our office has done over the course of the time that I've been in place, 14, 15 months now. And certainly outreach has been of utmost importance. And as well, each of you have experienced what I have called the pandemic since March 16th. So it has precluded certainly from our office being able to meet with people on a physical basis. But we were glad to be able to pivot. And Councilwoman Sharon McBride made mention that she was being pinged during the critical time of the pandemic in regards to the workshops that we were doing from a virtual standpoint, where we at times had in upwards of hundreds of people to join us. And you can find those workshops certainly on our webpage of the city. So there's a number of things that have occurred, a number of ways that we were able to reach people, help those that were challenged by the pandemic and even challenges that they were experiencing before the pandemic. There were businesses that did not have EIN numbers. There were businesses that did not and have, had not connected to financial institutions for banking opportunities, business banking opportunities, and a number of other challenges that businesses were facing. Through our support and help, we were able to channel those businesses relationships and opportunities that provided them a way of upscaling themselves. I'm pleased to announce, as I may mention, that we have in place called the Small Business Assistance Suite, Colette Holt, which is considered to be an icon around the country, around the world in the diversity and inclusion industry, came on in November and commended our city for the resource that we have created to scale up our businesses, providing bookkeeping and accounting, providing legal services, providing business coaching and financial, financial coaching. She stated that even major cities are not doing those kinds of things. So I'm excited to provide those kinds of opportunities to our MWBEs. That's happening right now. And those businesses Dr. Moss made mention of are being assisted and as well assessed so that we're able to help them and wrap our arms around them in scaling them up and as well positioning them for greater opportunities. This office has worked very hard and diligently at meeting the needs of MWBEs. We've been successful. We have provided two reports, as has been mentioned, that hasn't happened. But when you don't do your homework, then of course you will share out of ignorance. And so we've provided two annual reports. Our quarterly report, as has been mentioned, if you have participated in the past two IPC board meetings, everyone would understand where we are with that. And as well, in our next meeting, we do plan to share the quarterly report. But with that being said, moving forward on this program plan and ordinance has nothing to do with the quarterly report. Or we have a annual report that gives you data that helps us all make good decisions. There is a need for this ordinance and there is a need for the program plan to bring the transformational change that we so desire and want to see. My hope is that each of you as council members will recognize the need for this ordinance and program plan and that you will vote yes for it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Chair.
Yes, Councilman Davis.
He had made mention about a sweets program. And I was wondering if he could expand on that a little bit more about the outcomes of it.
Is that permissible? He has had his five minutes for the rebuttal to answer the councilman's.
Yes, that's permissible.
Thank you.
And I mean, what is the percentage of received small business loans?
Did you hear the councilman's question?
I did. Thank you, Councilman Henry, for the question. We're working with approximately 100 businesses. Each of them are involved with either accounting and bookkeeping, legal, business coaching, or, excuse me, financial coaching. And as we assess them, then we're able to channel them to the support services that they need. We're in the first quarter of that. And I certainly look forward to presenting at a later time data behind the support and help that we've given those businesses. And at some point, certainly, I want to circle back to be able to provide testimonial time of those businesses that we've been able to scale up and/or help in this first quarter.
I just have comments now, so when you're ready.
Thank you.
Back to the council for comments.
Right, I understand that. But if there's amendments that we know clearly that want to be made, do we, when does that process? Do we make that before the statements? Because normally it's a statement and then you will entertain with a motion. So I just want clarity on with multiple amendments here that we get this right.
I would ask the administration if those amendments were acceptable to them. And then when it comes time to make a motion, move to accept the third substitute bill as amended on the floor and vote on that motion.
I have a question. Why would you ask the administration if they're acceptable or understanding of the amendments that the council asks for? What was, why would that be a question?
It's a question because it's, it was their proposal that was submitted to the council. And technically, if they are not in agreement with the proposal, they could move to pull the bill from the council.
But it would still be up to the council to make the recommendations and vote it through.
Oh, yes.
As the council, regardless of what the administration says.
Yes.
About it.
Yes.
So what would be a point of asking them, could we, if this would be to their satisfaction?
Again, if they chose to, if they disagreed with the proposed amendments, they could pull the bill from the council at this time?
I was just trying to make a clear distinction between the divisions of government. So we, right now, we have control of what's going on here, not the administration. And I just want to make sure that my council colleagues know that. It's not the administration's time, it's the council's time.
That's correct. The council has to act on the bill, but the bill still has to be before the council. If the administration.
Yeah, once we voted down or voted through, et cetera, right.
Okay, so council members, at this portion, we're going to ask for statements regarding the bill 208221. Is there any council members, Councilman Davis, would you like to make a statement?
Ladies first.
Okay. Councilwoman Hammond, you have a statement.
I do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since we've been debating this, I have tried really hard to understand the intention of the dramatic changes in the bill. I really want to support this. I've been told that this version will result in a more robust measure. However, after many conversations, I was strongly convinced that this new endeavor would actually result in a bill with less teeth than the current ordinance. So therefore, I think it is imperative that we add the two amendments that have been talked about this evening. Secondly, the previous 2019 bill came to fruition only after considerable input from the public. I remain concerned that the, the public was not engaged at a meaningful level in the creation of this new ordinance. My fear is and has been that this is only going to lead to further confusion and frustration among the public. And I think we're hearing that now. Finally, I would ask the community to find a way to separate the ordinance from the perceived issues with the follow through of the director. We've addressed the issues of making the program plan legally binding to the ordinance and added that all changes to the program plan must come before the council for approval. So now we must focus on implementation and provide rigorous oversight, which is vital in creating real change here. So, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Is there another council member wishes to make a statement? Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you so much. I would just like to say thank you for all of the dialogue. I was contacted by a community, community member pre the pandemic. And with that dialogue that we had, and very appreciative and knowledgeable of that, made contact with Ms. Colette Holt and had a lengthy dialogue with her. And during that conversation, it was, talked about the recommendations that was made, how we can move forward. And this was right at the time, I believe, when there was a discovery that an error was made in the disparity study. So after that, we still had dialogue after the disparity study was updated. And Ms. Holt's recommendations were that, or analysis during our conversation was that we were moving in the right direction, as far as, we have a long way to go, of course. But that we were moving in the right direction of, of making sure that the council and administration, you know, had a plan of action and was moving ahead. And my issues and hesitation at the beginning, when it came to us about a month ago, was I wanted to make sure that the administration, that it had enough teeth that it was addressing inclusion and enforcement and accountability. And all of the questions that I had or concerns that I had was addressed and changed in the current form. So I want to say thank you for hearing the concerns that I had. We definitely still have much work to do. It is sad that we are still talking about quality of life and equity and inclusion for minorities and women in 2021. But this is where we are and this is the reality. And we have to make sure that we are including minorities and women's in contracts and businesses and that we are supporting them. So in order for us to make progress and make change and start supporting what we know that needs to happen to enhance quality of life, I, we have a lot of work to continue to do with the other recommendations. But I support this bill because it is a step in the right direction. We have a long way to go, understand that. But it is a step in the right direction, in my observation.
Thank you. Councilman Wax, you had a statement?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to state that before we consider the merits of a bill, we need to consider the legality of that bill. As Attorney DeRose stated, the city, before enacting a legislation like this, needs to prove a compelling interest in remedying identified discrimination based upon strong evidence, and that the measures so taken are narrowly tailored to that evidence. The purpose of the city's diversity study was to determine whether or not there was a compelling interest, and then to recommend what remedies may be appropriate, if any, to address that compelling interest. The, as the presenter stated, the study data was incorrect. And then instead of showing an 80% disparity, it in fact showed a 183% disparity, which is an error of about 250%. Instead of showing negative disparities, it in fact showed the opposite. And despite that, the conclusions and recommendations of the study remained wholly unchanged. The, there was no changes to the study conclusions as to what findings there were or what actions need to be taken other than changing the data. The fact that the data can change so drastically with no changes in conclusions or recommendations belies the credibility of the study. Second, to qualify as narrowly tailored, the city must meet the maximum feasible portion of the goal through race-neutral measures, as well as estimate that portion of the goal that it predicts will be met through such measures. The study fails to do so. Instead of providing any determination or estimates from their study, it simply dismissed the ability of race-neutral programs to be effective. Based on this, I do not believe the city has come close to meeting its burden of providing strong evidence of discrimination, nor that its race- and gender-based remedies are narrowly tailored. Accordingly, I do not think that we should be considering this bill, this ordinance. We should not be amending it. We should be setting it aside until we could have a proper study with good data and conclusions, and we should move from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council members wishing to make a statement? Councilman Lee?
Yes, this, this bill has been a very polarizing bill. But it has caused all of us to do a lot more research than we have in, well, for me, in the past. With the various concerns from outside individuals and even concerns for myself, I wanted to know, why do we need to do this? Why, what needs to change? And why, why do we, why are we going through this? And so doing research, talking with the Office of Inclusion, Diversity and Inclusion, and then also just the emails that have come from people who have concerns, began to dig deep to see why is this necessary? And coming back to find out that the previous ordinance was not legal, or it was, it had challenges. And that trying to strengthen this, and then even the added things that we're going to be adding to this strengthens it even further. We have to make sure that minorities and women are included in opportunities that are here in the city. I'm 100% for that. I want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to prosper in our city. And so with all of the questions that were asked of me and getting answers back, and then, and then hearing the presentations, you know, this, again, and even, I talk to people from building trades, I talk to people in different areas of South Bend, because I didn't want to just vote on something or vote against something without the information. And what I found out is when you do the research and you get the information, you find out that these are, this is something necessary if we're going to ever break the glass ceiling in our city and bring opportunities to people of color and to women. And so I just want to say that, that, you know, seeing the changes that have been made, adding more insight from the oversight from the council, and these steps that we're going to be voting on as amendments to this bill helps to strengthen it. And so I just wanted, I just wanted it to be known and said that, you know, we gotta, we gotta work together, y'all. We can't let stuff tear us apart or people tear our character down. We gotta work together. South Bend is going to be a better city, so.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Councilman Davis, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, ma'am, you remember me.
Yes, sir. I'm not used to seeing those little hands anymore.
Right, 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 you know. And I'm trying to make as loud a heart as I can, but I'm actually channeling my inner Timothy Rouse right now. Because I am almost to say that I am embarrassed. A lot of what I've heard from the public, whether it's been through my email, phone calls, what have you, has really been a matter of miscommunication. A lot of what has taken place that has polarized this community is because people have failed to return phone calls or chosen not to answer questions that they should answer. I even must, for myself, had a discussion with the director of this particular department. And before three minutes was up, we were off the phone because I was asked to justify the questions that I was asking. I'm a council member, I'm an elected official. My support is paramount when these sorts of issues come up. So I shouldn't have to be asked to justify anything. The justification needs to be made on the other end in order for it to be passed. So we have so many things that have been talked about this entire time that deals solely with communication. The two amendments, thank you, President White, for your leadership in making sure that those two amendments were pushed out front, because that satisfied me where I'm at right now in order to make a proper decision on this here particular bill. But I am still unhappy with the level of success that this bill is supposed to and should have already pulled in. I ask that we use report for city offices for a reason. This is the perfect reason. So that this council is updated, not only the council but the public, so they have the ability to ask questions and get recent information. Not a year's off information, not two years off, not 30 years off. But what a particular department is doing right now to satisfy what the issues may be here in this community. No one's here to belabor, belabor the point or to belittle any member of this particular city in any organization. That's not, that's not the point. The point is to get the most out of this as we possibly can. And right now, you have a 51% poverty rate within the black community, double-digit unemployment, subpar housing, schools being shut down in those very communities, food deserts, and we can just go on and on with the list. It's just bad. And so for us to behave in such a, less than desirable way when questions are being asked, causes this problem when everything gets jammed up and fingers get pointing. I think that we just need to have more of a servant's heart. We need to be a little bit more forgiving of the other people. And also, if someone, if someone challenges you in your frame of reference, in your frame of thought, there's nothing wrong with it. Respond accordingly and move on. You're going to get challenged. This is the public job. This is what we all signed up for. Whether you're in the department or you're sitting up here with these nine members of the council, it's going to happen. You're dealing with people. You're dealing with people's livelihoods, and you're dealing with their money. So you're going to get something bad. It's just like that. So I will, I'm going to ask that the two amendments that are up for amendment, that they are spelled out again so people know what we're talking about, and so we can begin to move forward. But I expect more out of our city departments. I expect a lot more out of our city departments. And as we are going, headed to budget, there will be more and tougher questions asked about the performance of these city departments and how they are actually doing the job that they're getting paid to do. Because there is a lot of lack that is occurring and that I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. President White, you had a statement?
Yes, I'm going to say just very few, I have very few comments. I was just here, I was just sitting here thinking 1987, and now we're in 2021. And we're still talking about equity, inclusion, and ensuring that minority-owned business, women businesses, that they have opportunity to be at the table. They have opportunity to reap the benefits from economic perspective and to be recognized as businesses. As we move forward, and this conversation has been very encouraging, you know, parts of it has been painful. I would not sit in this chair and say that they have not, but they have been encouraging. When I have listened to those individuals who have spoken in favor and those who have spoken opposition, the commonality that I've heard is that we need this particular ordinance and program plan. The issue becomes, when we get into the details, how do we move forward? There's a commonality here that it is needed. And I think that we have all the resources. When we come together, we work, we have conversations, we correct information that may not be correct. But there's too much resting on this council and this city to get it right. And I'm committed to do what it needs to, what needs to happen to get it right.
That's right.
Okay, and I know every other council member as well, our citizens, that the heart is that we have to get it right, and we have to work together. So those are my comments, and I'm encouraged, and I'm willing to move forward.
Thank you, President White.
Chair Niskoski, have a comment?
Yes, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. In November of 2019, South Bend elected its first female-majority common council. In 2019. It has taken that long. I sit here, too, as the first Asian council and council member in South Bend. And so there are many of us here who sit around this table, who know what the obstacles are, being a minority and being a woman. And that's what excites me about this bill. It is time to move this forward. The time is now. This is a program, program plan that can be implemented. It has support from departments, from the administration, and hopefully from the council. It has the intent that we needed it to be, which is to increase MWBE spending. I'm excited about this bill because in the ordinance, some of the phrases that have been added in A on the first page, that we will take, that this bill takes affirmative steps to address past discrimination.
Yes.
As allowed. That's exciting. As well, we've stated clearly that we strive to increase both the availability and the utilization. We can set goals, as many as we want, but the real work comes in increasing availability. And that takes all of us. And I believe this council and the current administration supports that wholeheartedly. I believe this bill fights exclusion in our community by leveling the playing field, increasing availability, increasing capacity of women minority-owned businesses so that we can be the community that we aspire to be. I support the two amendments that are on the floor. And I hope all of us will pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Troy, do you have any statement you would like to make?
No, let's vote.
Okay. Now, at this time, who is going to submit the amendments? We have a.
I would like to submit the amendment that outlines the role of the council in regards to reports as well as being made aware of any proposed changes as well. I want to ask Councilwoman Tomas Morgan to read the amendment for the record.
Okay.
Thank you, President White. If you could proceed, Ms. Morgan.
Sure. So we are proposing to add to the program plan on Page Eight, Section 4C, two parts where the council will be added to that paragraph, starting, "Before making any proposed changes effective, the program administrator must solicit feedback on the proposed changes from the legal department, the director of public works, the city engineer, the city controller, the director of purchasing, and the chief innovation officer." We are adding the common council, and that sentence finishes, "and the inclusive procurement and contracting board." The final sentence in that paragraph will read, "The program administrator must also present the changes to the inclusive procurement and contracting board." We add here, "and the common council," and the sentence finishes, "as well as other impacted city boards and commissions."
Okay, thank you.
Chairwoman Niskoski, I propose this amendment for consideration by the common council.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, there's been a motion.
I second.
Point of order.
Yes.
Do we do the amendment separately?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion, and it has been seconded. And do we need to take the roll call, or do we?
Roll call would be appropriate.
Yes, could you take the roll call, please? Okay. Councilmember Davis?
You know, I'm really going to sound like a Debbie Downer right now. I want to ask one more time if this is allowable right now, and there is for a vote. I didn't catch all of that. I caught half of it.
Would you like for the motion to read?
Mr. Davis, would you like to see this?
No, if you could just read.
Would you reread the motion, please?
The second half of that, which you read into the record, would be great. I caught the first half, but I think somewhere my brain turned off or something happened with me over here.
Sure, sure. So the second sentence?
The second half. He would like you to read the second half of it.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you on Page Eight?
The final sentence reads, "The program administrator must also present the changes to the inclusive procurement and contracting board, the common council, as well as other impacted city boards and commissions."
That was for the changes, okay, I got it. Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. And is there another amendment?
There is a second amendment.
Thank you. You want to go ahead and read it, Councilman?
Yeah, so in Section 14.5-3, under Establishment of the Program Plan, second paragraph, the paragraph reads, "Any changes made by the program administrator to the program plan, we would like to add in parentheses, 'as incorporated in this ordinance.'" Is that correct?
Correct.
End quotations. So what that does is makes the program plan as legally binding as the ordinance itself.
Does that come through a vote?
It does.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be in the form of a motion to accept the?
I would make a motion that we accept the second amendment.
Thank you, is there a second? Second. Second. Okay, there's been a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye, aye, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Nizkowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you, Clerk Jones. And then finally, if we could have a motion to accept the third substitute bill, 8221, as amended. As amended.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Nizkowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
So I make, we need one more motion.
That's what I was just asking.
I make a motion to send the bill 8221 to the whole council as the third substitute with the two amendments as read on the floor and voted on by the council and approved.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Nizkowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 8221 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Phew, okay.
Good work.
Okay, we're now going to move on to Bill 8421. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 8421 a second reading? Yes. 8421, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 2801 West Western Avenue. Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Yes, that came before zoning and annexation and was brought forth with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Or actually, I see Mr. Molnar, would you like to state your name and address to the presentation, please?
Yes. Thank you, Council. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. Before you today is a petition for a special exception for auto sales and rental. The property is located at 2801 Western Avenue, at the corner of Western and Bendix. Here is a view of the site as it currently stood about two months ago from just across, just across Western. And here was looking westerly from Bendix, obviously back in the winter when we went out and did some... The property is zoned NC Neighborhood Center, and in order to do auto sales in NC Neighborhood Center, you need this special exception. Everything in purple here along Western, you would need that special exception. Everything west from Falcon zoned, C commercial, this red, you would not need it. Based on the criteria put forth, the Board of Zoning Appeals is sending the petition forward with an unfavorable recommendation. If approved by council, as with any business owner in the, in the, in the Western Avenue facade area, we'd be happy to work with them to utilize the facade matching grant resources to help improve the site. Happy to answer any questions if you have, and I do see that the petitioner is on as well.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to speak? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Aaron Wills, and my address is 812 South Jackson Street, 46616... Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, 46619. Thank you, guys, for your time. I've been listening to everything that's been said, and I would appreciate the special, special zoning conditions. I've been in touch with Mr. Molnar and Ms. Angela, and I've already re, I've already remodeled the inside of the building. I plan on remodeling the exterior of the building and hopefully getting some grants so I can make this building look like the rest of Western. And there are car lots located, like, very close south or east and west of me, very close in the same district. But the owner of the building, he had got sick, so he couldn't, he was not able to keep up with the, with the grandfather-in zoning. So it has not been zoned as a car lot since 2004, I believe, but it once was a car lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Molnar, are we able to add any facade requirements or landscaping requirements for this, since there were some concerns of the property blending into the newly modified area on Western?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. The, this, the building will need to meet the, will need to meet the Neighborhood Center transparency requirements and landscaping requirements if the applicant, petitioner isn't able to meet those, and we'll work with them if it is approved. If they're not able to meet those, they'll have to go to get variances before the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are requirements built into the zoning ordinance for this district.
Wonderful, thank you.
Is there any other members? Councilman Lee?
Yes, I'd like to ask, will this be auto repair, or is it just auto sales and rental? And how many cars do you think you're going to have?
It will be auto sales and rental, it will not be auto repair. I don't, I will probably have between 10, 12 vehicles at a time. I won't try to overload Western because I, it's already overloaded, and I just, I have the building, and I'm just, you know, it's the only thing that I can do with the building right now. Because it was, it was already, it was already like this when I, when I got it. I just want to make it prettier, and, you know, if I have to put some, do some landscaping, I'm ready and willing to do anything I have to do to meet the requirements of the zoning committee.
And, and what, what, why do you want to put a car lot there?
Well, I've, I've been selling cars for, you know, for a while now, and I actually, I've done some work for the owner, and he told me he had this building, so then we, we got together, I went to the building, and I noticed it needed a lot of work, so I began to remodel the interior of the building. I'm a carpenter by trade. And I, it's easier to, it's easier to fix vehicles and sell those than it is to fix houses and sell those in, in this market right now.
Yeah. That's a good answer.
Councilman Davis, do you have a...
Thank you. Mr. Molnar, what does a zoning allow, what is the zoning law that allows X amount of cars there? I know that there is a number that exists there. What is that number?
Angela, do you want to pick that one?
Sure. Angela Smith, zoning administrator with the City of South Bend. The number of cars will probably, is actually going to be limited by the layout of the site. So what the ordinance says is that the cars have to essentially fit into what would be a parking space. So it'll depend on how many legal parking spaces can fit on the site. We didn't have a detailed site plan to kind of help with that. It may not even be 10, because you'll have to have, like, the parking space and a drive aisle. Each car has to have direct access to be able to get out. And that was a, well, it was put in several years ago to avoid stacking and use car sales lots.
Yeah, I did that law, myself and Councilmember White. So that's why the question's out there, and that's why it exists.
Yeah, it's not a specific number per site. It depends on the, the overall layout of the site, and we will work with the petitioner to help determine what that is.
Okay, thank you. I think.
Are you finished?
I didn't answer the question, and yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Is there any other council members that have a question for the petitioner? Okay, seeing none, I think we're going to move on to the public hearing portion. Is there any from the, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8421?
This is Dawn from the clerk's office, and I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
You mean into favor, in favor of the bill?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't see anyone wishing to speak in favor of this bill.
Thank you. And is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this bill?
I do not see anyone present that's wishing to speak in opposition of this bill as well.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. And at this point, the public hear, hearing on Bill 8421 is now closed.
Move for favorable recommendation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll? Okay. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizkowsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. That bill will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Jones, we're going to move on to Bill 8821. Could you please give Bill 8821 a second reading? Yes. 8821, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 601 and 605 North Eddie Street. Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this bill came before the zoning and annexation committee, and we voted to table it until May 24th.
Thank you. So, May 24th? So I believe there's no other further action that needs to be taken on this bill?
No.
Okay. So do I still have to go through the committee, yeah, there's nothing else that's needed? Okay. Do we need to vote on the continuation of the bill till May 24th, what, since it's in the committee of the whole?
No, you don't, because it never made it out of committee.
Okay, so at this moment, we can just move on to the next?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And that leaves, what, Bill 8921? Okay, so we're going to move on to Bill 8921. Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 8921 a second reading? Yes. 8921, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1624 Marietta, 717 East Duville, 1618 Marietta, 707 East, East Duville, 1614 Marietta, and 709 East Duville, and 713 East Duville. Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Bill 8921 came before zoning and annexation and was brought to the committee at the hall with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hammond. Is Mr. Molnar present? And the petitioner present?
Yes, petitioner is present.
Okay. Mr. Molnar, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist, offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. Before you today, this is actually a use variance, so it's something that we haven't seen in a while in the City of South Bend. This is not a special exception where the use is deemed appropriate for that district but needs the extra council approval. This is a use that is not allowed in the zoning district as it currently is, and the use variance essentially override that zoning district. The reason for that being is that the petitioner is looking to do a plant agricultural use at this site at the corner of Marietta and Duville. Currently, the only places you can do a full-scale plant agricultural use in the City of South Bend are Area Zone, C Commercial, and I Industrial. We did not think that commercial or industrial was an appropriate use for, you know, in the heart of a neighborhood across from a school. That's why we're going down this use variance path. Here is the site as it currently stands today, it's a vacant field that once had houses on it, and has, there's no improvements to date. The petitioner is looking to use it, like I said, for agricultural purposes. They did receive, sorry about that, variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, that if like a shed is erected on the site, it will be primarily in the northeast corner of the site, so that it is not along the road. And they did receive variance for the fence as well. The staff sent it to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation, and the Board of Zoning Appeals is sending it to you with a favorable recommendation, subject to the site being held to any further agricultural, urban agricultural ordinance that would be established. The staff is right now looking into putting together an urban agricultural ordinance. It's something we're hoping to do at some point, and if, we're just hoping that if this would be allowed, that, if that ordinance is ever passed, that it would need to meet those standards as well, if they do ever get approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and the petitioner is...
Thank you. Did the petitioner want to make any comments?
Sure, yeah. Steven Story here, 910 Milton Street, South Bend, Indiana. Just a bit more, a bit more context, by plant agriculture, essentially, we're just talking about a large fruit, vegetable, flower, and herb garden. So the, my wife and I live a couple blocks away in the neighborhood, and our primary objective is to grow the bulk of our, of our produce. And then a secondary objective is to, would be to sell the excess at local farmers' markets for our community. So, yeah, we hope that this could be a creative use of some of the vacant lots in our neighborhood, of which there are many, and that it can serve to beautify the neighborhood, to be a place that's open to community engagement. And, yeah, as was mentioned previously, we would hope to put up a fence that would align with the expectations for a fence in, in someone's front yard, so maximum of four feet, at least 70% open. And the goal there would just be to, to keep garden critters out, or pests, so rabbits, groundhogs, and the like. And then also to, to keep people from, yeah, I've already lost a few strawberry plants to rabbits. And then also to keep people from driving through the lot or parking on it, which has been a frequent occurrence since we moved to the neighborhood. So, and then the purpose of the shed, of the shed would just be a small tool shed. So, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well, but I think that's all that I'd add right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner or of Mr. Molnar?
I have a question, Chair.
Okay, Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you so much for the presentation and include me on the call for Mr. Story or Mr. Molnar. I believe we had a discussion. Can you please share the similar location to the garden that we had? Can you please, uh, share the similar location, um, to the garden that we have currently in South Bend? I believe it was in N-N-N District, in the first district.
There is, uh, a garden in the N-N-N District that, that this might be modeled after. That is on their own property that they have a house on, I believe. So that's why they didn't need to get this use variance, um, if I'm remembering that correctly. Um, so the, the use of the lot is the house itself is their residence, and then the, the garden is subsidiary to that. Um, this, in this case, there is no residence, so that's why they need to go through the use variance. I think I'm getting that right, Angela.
Thank you.
Uh, there is another site that will probably be coming before you that, uh, we have discovered during the recent months that's doing something similar to this, that is not their primary residence, but we are working with the petitioner. Um, they're actually part of what's going to help us with the urban act ordinance, so...
Uh, my second question is, what is the difference between, uh, the unity gardens that we have versus, uh, this special use?
So the unity gardens, first of all, it's in a different, uh, zoning classification. It's in the C commercial district. Uh, so that's, uh, the biggest difference. Um, the other thing is, uh, we have in our ordinance, community gardens, which are permitted by right in the residential districts. The primary difference between a community garden and what's being sought today is a community garden is kind of just open to whomever. Um, uh, Unity Gardens does a lot of these within neighborhoods, and these are just kind of open to whoever wants to come in and help themselves to the food. There's usually no fence, no shed, it's just the plants themselves. This particular model and what we're seeing are people who want to do this for, um, their own personal consumption and/or to sell it at the farmer's market for a profit. So it becomes a little bit more of a business model. We have the one in the northeast neighborhood, it's kind of a co-op type of model where they grow produce for people who then, um, buy directly from them. Uh, so it's, it's not, um... It, it's more of a business than a, um, public service, yes.
Thank you. I definitely welcome it to the third district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Uh, Councilmember Lee?
Uh, we talked about it earlier. You guys are going to be growing food to, uh, for yourselves and then taking it to the farmer's market. Will you be offering that to residents in the area to be able to, you know, buy fresh produce from you guys in the, in the neighborhood?
At... At this point, the plan would be to go to the farmer's market with all of our, uh, produce that we're not consuming ourselves. I think, um... Yeah, I would be... I would love to engage our neighborhood as much as possible. At this point, I'm not sure, um, what regulations would go with selling it off of the property or having like a farm stand or something. Um, so I've been focusing on just making sure that it was all right, that I grow the food. Um, and certainly for this year, I'll be planning to focus just on our own personal food and then farmer's markets for the rest, but yeah, a, a hope of ours is that this would, that we would be able to engage our neighbors and um, that this would be an asset for our neighborhood, so, uh, I'm very open to creative ways to get this food to our neighbors.
Okay.
I'll be in contact.
Great, thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Councilman Lee? Okay, Councilwoman, um, Tomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I believe this is a question for the staff. In the analysis and recommendation report, um, it said that staff recommends that, uh, the board approved the variance as, as presented, subject to the following. The first being that the shed be located with a minimum setback of sixty feet from the front or corner lot lines. Um, so is, is this variance coming to us with that? Um, subject to that?
So the variances actually stop with the Board of Zoning Appeals. So anything related to the development standards of the site, um, were, are decided by them. The use is what comes to, uh, the council. The board did, um, approve the shed location with that condition. Essentially, the goal was to make sure the shed was located in a place that would be an approximate location if there were houses here and that was in the rear yard. So it's based on the, um, location of the houses adjacent to each of these and kind of how far back it takes to get to be behind their structure, which is where accessory structures are supposed to be. And the petitioner agreed to the, that location, so he will find a, a place on the property that doesn't put it right at the corner and sets it back a little bit into the site.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Is there any other questions from council? Okay, so at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill eighty-nine twenty-one?
This is Dawn from the clerk's office. I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill eighty-nine twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Bill eighty-nine twenty-one?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill eighty-nine twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on Bill eighty-nine twenty-one is now closed. Uh, is there any council members wish to make any statements regarding this bill? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion regarding Bill eighty-nine twenty-one.
I move that we send Bill eighty-nine twenty-one to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I will now entertain, oh, I'm sorry, Bill eighty-nine twenty-one will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation. So at this mo... Time, I would like to entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. At this time, I would ask Clerk Jones, will you please give third substitute bill eighty-two dash one as amended in the committee of the whole a third reading? Eighty-two twenty-one. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, repealing and replacing current chapter fourteen point five of the South Bend municipal code to address inclusive minority and women business enterprise development programs. Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding this bill?
Yes, President White. Bill eighty-two twenty-one was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding third substitute bill eighty-two dash twenty-one as amended, as amended in the committee of the whole.
So move.
We have a motion and it's been seconded?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Third substitute bill eighty-two dash twenty-one as amended has been passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill eighty-four dash twenty-one a third reading? Eighty-four twenty-one. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at twenty-eight oh one West Western Avenue. Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill eighty-four dash twenty-one?
Yes, President White. Uh, Bill eighty-four twenty-one was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion?
So move.
Move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill eighty-four dash twenty-one has passed. Will you now please give third reading to Bill eighty-nine dash twenty-one? Eighty-nine twenty-one. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at sixteen twenty-four Marietta, seven seventeen East Duville, sixteen eighteen Marietta, seven oh seven East Duville, sixteen fourteen Marietta, seven oh nine East Duville, seven thirteen East Duville. Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill eighty-nine dash twenty-one?
Yes, President White. Bill eighty-nine twenty-one was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
We'll now... Move for passage. We have a motion for passage. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Thank you. Bill eighty-nine dash twenty-one has passed. We'll now move into resolutions. There are no res... Aye.
Nine ayes. Just making sure.
Okay, making myself together. Thank you. Um, we moved to the resolution portion of our meeting, and there are no resolutions at this time. Bill's first reading. There are no bills listed for first reading. Is there any unfinished business, council members?
I'm not sure if there's unfinished business or not, but I, I'll, I'll try it. I wanted to, um, thank our legal team for their hard work and what has resulted in, uh, winning for this common council. Um, we've been battling this tape scandal case thing for quite some time now. And it appears that we are over the bridge and getting ready to enter into, um, where we all thought we needed to be, uh, with some truth and transparency about what took place. And so I want to, my hats is off to, uh, Mr. Palmer, Attorney Palmer, for his hard work and his continued hard work over this case. You've been with us, doing this for some time, uh, and also the members, uh, the, the other workers over at your law firm, um, thank you. You guys did an awesome job. Uh, I appreciate you. I don't know if everybody else do, but I appreciate you. And the reason why I say that, um, because I took a number of hits, um, uh, for several years because I wrote a, a letter to the Department of Justice. Uh, I was sued in open court because someone said that I didn't have the authority to write a letter on council letterhead that showed my name. My name was on the council letterhead, but then somebody said, hey, he can't write a letter to the Department of Justice. Then I was sued in open court. Then after that, I was pulled over, my father and I were pulled over at gunpoint. I mean, this stuff, you can't make these things up. I mean, it, it's, it's almost too real for a, for a movie. Thereafter, um, we ended up paying several thousands of dollars in legal fees. Thereafter, my house was, um, a part of a bargaining, this, uh, conversation. And the reason why that became a part of a bargaining conversation is because then the city attorney, uh, Ms. Briscoe, told the council that she was going to handle the case. The council was removed from the case. I was left on the case. And as time moved forward, I was being defaulted in open court because my legal representation wasn't showing up to the court hearings. So what was going on is that there was a judgment of forty thousand dollars that was being sent through the court system, ultimately trying to get that attachment to my, on my house. Because I wrote a letter to the Department of Justice, I have a First Amendment right. Then thereafter, the personal attacks and the job losses and you guys saw the news, news. You know, you, you were privy to that. And I don't necessarily feel like that I'm vindicated right now, but that's a lot of weight off my shoulders. Tons of weight. And there was a lot more in there, and you have to believe that my family, my wife, my son, you know, took a, a brunt of that hit because I wrote a letter to the Department of Justice, because I stood up for the rights of the citizens in this community, whether they're black, white, woman, rich, poor, whatever. Because I stood up for it. So when folks talk about personal attacks and, you know, people being mean and rude, I don't necessarily feel that, because I think I've been through the worst. I have. It's been on video, it's been on TV, it's been everywhere. But I, 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 I don't, I don't hold anyone responsible for that. I think I, I've gotten over most of it. But Mr. Palmer, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for sticking with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Uh, do you want to remind everybody that it's just, uh, one more step? There's, there's probably more to go.
But I can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
And I also want to acknowledge Mr., uh, Matt Anderson and, uh, Spence Walton from my office, who, what, what, they were an equal part of this team that, that we put together for the last eight and a half years, and it couldn't have been done without them.
Thank you, Assistant.
Thank you.
We'll now move to, is there any new business? Seeing none, um, privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor? There is no one, uh, waiting from the public to speak privilege of the floor. And I will always read the statement under privilege of the floor. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time for this portion shall be thirty minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has previously, uh, discussed on the agenda, and the council president may assign a topic to any, uh, individuals during the privilege of the floor. And if the concerns, uh, pertain to the administration, those questions will be directed to that particular department. And since there's no one waiting to hear under, uh, the privilege of the floor, I would say that our May tenth meeting is adjourned. Thank everyone for your attentiveness as well, and wish you peace, health, and be safe.